[612.48]
... Yeah. All this time, I mean, I'm like, oh, I'm just trying to figure it out. I'm like, I don't know what's going on. Why is it that we're being so hard on ourselves? But for this, um, this house, we're, um, we're starting to learn how to treat everyone. Um, I thought there was a piece of time to do the job, but actually, it was not so easy. It was so difficult on my feet, so I'm like, I think it was sort of, um, the three or four parts. It's like on the external side, it's on the inside.
This hearing of the Subcommittee on Conservation and Forestry about voluntary conservation utilizing innovation technology will come to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Chief, thank you for being here. Sorry about the delay. Votes have a way of getting in the way of things around here, so thank you for your patience. The good news, I guess that was the first and the last of the votes for today, so we shouldn't run any further problems with votes or conflicts. I'd like to welcome everyone to this hearing of the Conservation and Forestry Subcommittee on the topic of utilizing innovation and technology in voluntary conservation. This hearing provides an opportunity to highlight new practices, innovative approaches to using tried and true methods, and advancing technology as it applies to voluntary conservation efforts. And we know that voluntary conservation programs work. However, it has become increasingly clear that some government agencies and environmental activist organizations, which are sometimes one and the same, fail to recognize the commitment to our farmers, ranchers, and foresters that they make to environmental stewardship. Our farmers and ranchers, through assistance and incentives provided by the Farm Bill conservation programs, have voluntarily reduced soil erosion, increased wetlands, improved water quality, and preserved farmland and wildlife habitat. The earth's population is projected to grow to roughly nine billion people by the year 2050. Given the growing demands on farmlands everywhere, we must invest in the necessary resources and the best practices to be certain that producers can continue to meet this growing need. To that end, I'm particularly proud of this committee's work on conservation programs during the deliberation of the most recent Farm Bill. The 2014 Farm Bill contained creative, outside-the-box approaches to funding and delivering conservation programs. Now, one of the biggest successes of this creative approach has been the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, known as RCPP. RCPP is an innovative approach to target conservation initiatives. It uses NRCS programs that produce known conservation improvements and leverages that federal funding with matching funding from partners in the private sector. Now, it has brought together broad coalitions consisting of commodity organizations, conservation groups, sportsmen, and others to unite around a common goal. In the first two years, RCPP has awarded funding to 199 projects across all 50 states and Puerto Rico, and matched over the $500 million in program funding with $900 million from the partner contributions. Now, these efforts that bring all perspectives to the table are the ones that are actually working, and it takes everyone coming together. Today, we'll hear firsthand how RCPP projects are being implemented in tandem with many other programs and tools at NRCS's disposal, and I especially look forward to hearing about an RCPP project that is taking place in my home state of Pennsylvania. Our farmers and ranchers are the best stewards of the land and continually adapt to protect our natural resources despite the overly burdensome regulatory environment that is imposed upon them. Now, I see this all the time across the 5th District of Pennsylvania where farmers are engaging in innovative practices, including no-till farming, healthy soils, and adhering to other best practices in order to preserve the nutrients in the soil. In addition to the great work being done at the state and county levels, I'm proud that so many of the farmers and foresters in Pennsylvania have taken voluntary steps in order to do their part to assist in recovery of the Chesapeake Bay. The environmental gains that they have achieved are a testament to our producers. No two producers face the same natural resource concerns, whether they are two miles or 2,000 miles apart from each other, protecting our drinkable water supply, keeping nutrients in the soil for the next crop year, or maintaining a supply of forage for livestock. There is no shortage of reasons why we must continue to innovate when it comes to preserving our natural resources. Now, I'd like to obviously thank Mr. Jason Weller, Chief of the NRCS, for being here today. Greatly appreciated, Chief. And I encourage everyone to pay close attention to the testimony of our second panel, which is representative of a wide swath of our country. It is encouraging to see how farmers, ranchers, foresters, and stakeholders have made promoting the health and sustainability of the land a fundamental priority. And again, thank you all for making the time to be here today, and I look forward to hearing the testimony of each of our witnesses. And now, I yield to the ranking member for her opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Chief Weller. I too appreciate that we're having a hearing on how to be more innovative and how to do that in a way that incentivizes ranchers and farmers, because clearly, we need their participation. And in fact, I think they're a very effective, willing partner here because they recognize the value of effective conservation programs. Frankly, as I'm preaching to the choir, I am sure farmers and ranchers are the backbone of conservation in America. They depend on the land for their livelihoods and seek to leave it better than they found it. I don't believe, really, that anyone cares more about the land than farmers and ranchers. Farmers and ranchers across the country have sought to protect water quality, soil, agriculture productivity, forest management, and air quality by using tools available through the Farm Bill, specifically USDA's Natural Resource Conservation Service. Now, I've often mentioned the inadequate rainfall and drought conditions in my home state of New Mexico and in the Southwest. Fortunately, there are conservation tools available to help southwestern producers cope with these dire situations. I've heard from several New Mexico producers that the Conservation Stewardship Program, which pays producers to adopt conservation activities to improve working lands, helped in keeping many farmers and ranchers on their lands and in business during the past drought. The most recent dire drought setting has been about five years, but we expect drought conditions to continue for decades longer. In addition, the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, RCPP, which was created in the 2014 Farm Bill, has allowed the New Mexico Association of Conservation Districts to work with the New Mexico Asequia Association and several New Mexican land grants to restore historic asequias, asequias on agricultural lands. And maybe for some of the folks on the committee and our viewers today, asequias are a traditional way of bringing water in arid communities, and it's directly from Spain, that irrigation method. This project helps improve water quantity and quality and supports local families and communities served by the asequia system. I'm looking forward to hearing more about conservation efforts that we can explore to help address water shortages and improve water quality. Soils and soil health have been a recent topic of conversation with last year being the International Year of Soils. This resource is critical to the health of the country and production of a quality food supply, and I thank the NRCS for promoting the issue. Our soils will be a valuable part of any future plans to combat global climate change. They have the tremendous ability to store carbon and will only become more valuable in the future. I look forward to hearing from Chief Weller on ways to capitalize on this underused carbon sink. One project I'm excited to hear more about in New Mexico is the Innovative Tribal Conservation and GHG Management Project, which is part of the RCPP under the Farm Bill. Conservation really is an unsung hero when we think about American agriculture. Voluntary conservation programs through the Farm Bill are key to helping our farmers and ranchers succeed and to keep protecting our natural resources. Again, I want to thank the chairman for holding today's hearing, and I'm certainly looking forward to hearing from the witnesses. Thank you.
I thank the gentlemen. Now, I recognize the ranking member of the full Agriculture Committee, Mr. Peterson, for opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief. I want to thank you and the ranking member for holding this hearing. And the Farm Bill's conservation programs provide necessary tools for farmers and ranchers that preserve our natural resources and help us meet regulatory requirements. I've been a longtime supporter of voluntary conservation efforts, and these efforts have been useful in my area in a number of different ways. One of the things that I've been trying to do is get folks to understand that if we do drainage water management in the right way, we can not only do a better job of managing the water, but also get really environmental benefits from being able to do this. And my part of the world, we've got this flooding going on in the Red River Valley. And whenever we have a flood, it just goes cross-country and washes everything out, and it all goes in the river, and it's a big mess. And one of the things I'm trying to get people to look at is what benefits we can get if we do pattern tiling, where we try to manage this water underneath the ground instead of over the top of the ground. And we have a witness from my district here to explain that to people today. And I appreciate the chairman including that person, and also, I think we're going to have potentially a field hearing up in our, or a field listening session up in our part of the world to further explore this. So I appreciate the opportunity to have those folks here. And Chief, we're looking forward to your testimony, and welcome to the committee.
Thanks, the gentlemen. The chair requests that other members submit their opening statements for the record so that witnesses can begin their testimony to ensure that there's ample time for questions. The chair would also like to remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in the order of seniority. For members who are present at the start of the hearing, after that, members will be recognized in order of their arrival, and I appreciate the members' understanding. Once again, Chief, thank you so much for, I know, carving time out of what are busy days, and to be able to come here and to join us. And once again, I'm pleased to welcome, you know, Chief Jason Weller, National Resource Conservation Service, U.S. Department of Agriculture, to the table. And Chief Weller, please go ahead and begin when you're ready, and we have waived the normal five minutes of time to give you adequate time to present the information that you have before us. So go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Luhman Grisham and other members of the committee. Good to see you all again. I'm really excited to be here today, and I really commend the committee. Mr. Chairman, your opportunity you're affording NRCS, but also the other witnesses here, to talk about all the really positive contributions that farmers and ranchers are making, and how much innovation is occurring right now in the private lands voluntary incentive-based conservation arena. It's unprecedented, and I hope to be able to touch upon it really briefly in my presentation. And I also very much appreciate your forbearance here to allow me to extend my remarks a few minutes and actually share with the committee some slides that I put together. And this is, I guess, a fallout from the last hearing we had with you and the committee on the soil health topic. So this is really an expansion on that topic. So the way this is organized, and this has been really difficult for me because in part, there's so much I want to talk about. There's so much awesome things that are happening right now. To get this condensed down to like 10 minutes is pretty hard to do, so I'm going to do my best. This is grouped into sort of three topic areas. Number one is next level upgrade for science, next level upgrade for tools, and then next level upgrade for partnerships. And all of you talked about this in your opening statements, you really touched upon what's happening in these three areas of science, tools, and partnerships. So NRCS started, as you of course know, over 80 years ago in the wake of the Dust Bowl. And we were at the very beginning, the very genesis, the first chief, Hugh Hammond Bennett, Dr. Bennett created the Soil Conservation Service. We were known as a technical, science-based agency, and what we shared was that scientific knowledge with that farmer or rancher to better manage initially their soils. It's really then incumbent upon us to stay current with current edge of the science, state of the science, and continue to share that technical knowledge in really everything that we do, whether it's through a program, through a conservation plan. It's sharing and imparting that technical knowledge on the landscape. And really, what we're very focused on at NRCS then is ensuring we're not just current state-of-the-art, but even leading edge in many cases on the current state of agronomic and conservation science. So an example of this are what we've been working with with partners on edge-of-field monitoring systems, where we're really trying to understand beyond modeling, we're really trying to understand what is actually happening in real-world agriculture, in real-world environments. When you put in place different crop rotation systems, residue management systems, tillage practices, nutrient management practices, what happens when you compare a treated field and an untreated field side by side? What happens to the surface water? And importantly, maybe you've installed a bioreactor as part of your ag drainage water management system. What happens to that tile water coming out the line? So then, over time, we can really scientifically, credibly understand, when you tweak and manage your crop fields better, what's the ultimate result? Beyond something modeled, you're actually getting real-world information, which then you can feed back to that landowner, to that customer, that farmer or rancher. And that scientific knowledge then helps drive better landscape decisions, both on a farm, but then in this case, a watershed. So we're looking at here, it comes out of Iowa, Sack County, Iowa, and this is a tributary of Black Hawk Lake. And there's a producer, a family operation, Linda Ritchie. And you can see here, there's a lot of headcut going on in this tributary, the stream, and this reservoir is impacted by sediment loadings, nutrient loadings coming off farm fields. Well, NRCS, using that scientific knowledge we get from those infield monitoring systems and our agronomic expertise, can come into this landscape and prescribe practices that can transform that tributary from what would originally be a real threat to that reservoir, in this case, ensuring clean waters continue to flow into that reservoir for the city's water supply, but also critically important, protecting those farm fields so they can stay productive over time and provide for the economic sustainability of that farm. Similarly, you can come to a farm field like this, this could be anywhere in the Midwest, where you have conventional tillage going on, not much protection in that soil. You get a heavy rain event, and you're seeing erosion occurring, the gullies forming, carrying off that farm field literally tons of sediment, pounds of nutrients that's leaving that farm field. Using, again, that science-based solution approach, you can come in, change the tillage practices, put in cover crops, and you can see what the effect is in terms of protecting the water as the water leaves the field. It's not carrying the sediment, it's not carrying those farm inputs, it's leaving all those really valuable components of agriculture in place to grow the cash crops we depend upon for our food supply. So we've used a lot of these scientific tools. What you see here is an image of Arkansas. And we've identified with state partners there in Arkansas, where are small-scale watersheds? Where we know there are risks based on the soils, risks to water quality in Arkansas. And so you see, for example, up in the northeast part of Arkansas, northwest part of Arkansas, there are different river basins. The St. Francis River Basin, the northeast part of the state, over there on the border with Oklahoma, you see the Illinois River System. And I'm proud to say, because of the voluntary contributions of farmers in these communities and USDA conservation programs this committee has funded and authorized, we've gone into these and over the last several years, put in place conservation practices on over 80,000 acres of cropland. And as a result of these proactive investments, these stream segments are being delisted. They were delisted in 2014 off of the state of Arkansas's list of impaired waters. And this isn't something that happened in spite of agriculture, this is something that happened because of agriculture. Because of the positive targeted approach that producers took and the voluntary incentive-based conservation programs delivered, we were able to clean up these waterways and provide cleaner water for communities, but also keep those productive lands in working agriculture. Other success stories from around the country. This is out of South Dakota. This is out of south central South Dakota on the border with Nebraska, and it's the Kihei Paha River watershed. And working counterclockwise from ever right there, you can see where the watershed is located. And really, the impairment, the impact on these waters in the Kihei Paha River was bacterial. There's too much E. coli and bacterial coliform colonies in the water column. And so we went in, we fenced out the creeks, we put in revegetated buffers, you can see in the lower left there, revegetated buffers just two years after we went in and treated that watershed. And ultimately, partners there in the state went in and monitored what was happening in the water column. So beyond us modeling and saying we're doing good things, we're using science to actually track and give agriculture credit for the proactive solutions we're bringing. And you can see, just over the course of five years, how we brought down and cut the E. coli bacterial counts by over two-thirds, bringing it to meet the state's water quality standards for bacteria. And in Oklahoma, another success story, this is out of Pond Creek in north central Oklahoma in Grant County. This is a 60-mile stream segment on the Pond Creek, and the entire Pond Creek was listed. For the main injuries to the creek were low dissolved oxygen counts, which is really bad for aquatic species, turbidity, which is basically the cloudiness of the water, there's too much suspended sediment in the water, and nutrients, too much nitrogen and phosphorus in the water, and bacterial counts, the four injuries. So what you're seeing here is we went in, and the first, the state went in and monitored what was happening in this watershed. And you can see in 2006 that in terms of the turbidity, 45, almost half, 50% of the monitoring results brought back exceeded the state water quality standards. And similarly, for the bacterial counts, far in excess of what was for the bacterial counts, far in excess of what was tolerated under the state water quality requirements. Well, NRCS came in, invested over the course of about eight years, over $4 million of private lands voluntary incentive-based conservation on the landscape. In the course of just, by 2014, in about eight years, we brought down, in terms of turbidity, there was zero exceedances of turbidity, and it met the state water quality standards for bacterial counts. So this stream segment has been delisted, and this is just one of 48 other success stories in Oklahoma in the past decade alone, where USDA's conservation programs, working in concert and partnership with ranchers, are cleaning up the waters of Oklahoma and making those water systems and reservoirs healthier for both wildlife and for people. So beyond targeting in small-scale watersheds, what this is, is a map of a large watershed, a large basin. In this case, it's the Western Lake Erie Basin, which has been a national focus in part because of the concerns in the Toledo area and the Lake Erie itself. And let me kind of unpack here what this picture is showing. We're using science to really understand what are the underlying properties of the soils in this basin. And in the watersheds there where it's colored red, kind of pink color, those are soils where inherently they're very erosive and also very porous. So there are going to be high risk of loss of sediment and nutrients from those farm fields from surface flow. The green watersheds are areas where low risk for erosion potential. And so what you're going to see over time here is from 2005 to 2015, we put in place 1.1 million acres of conservation practices, unique acres of conservation practices in the Western Lake Erie Basin. You're going to see the points over time where, using science, we've helped work with farmers to target the right conservation practices, and these are just for the soil erosion practices. So you're going to see the points appear here, and there's also colors associated with these points. So in just about a decade, enormous unleashed potential here of conservation delivering in this landscape, targeting those high-risk soils, locking them down, avoiding loss, but also controlling and trapping sediments before they leave the farm fields. And this is just on the sediment, we have other layers we could have shown you also looking at leaching potential, where we've also targeted leaching practices. But we estimate that these practices alone, over the course of a decade, helped reduce or prevent upwards of 970,000 tons of sediment loss are now not flowing into Lake Erie, and upwards of 10.4 million pounds of nitrogen and 2.4 million pounds of phosphorus are now not flowing to Lake Erie because of voluntary conservation programs delivered by USDA. So in addition, science is looking at Western Lake Erie Basin, there's a lot going on here in this slide, let me try and unpack it here. If you look at, we looked at producers, two main categories. What's the health of your soils? Are you gaining carbon or losing carbon? The two main factors. And then we looked at, what's your level of conservation stewardship? High-level conservation stewardship or low-level stewardship? Interestingly, looking at just corn yield, the difference between folks that had high levels of soil health or gaining carbon versus producers that were losing carbon, those guys in terms of corn yield had about 15% higher corn yield per acre than where those guys with healthy soils and then producers that had unhealthy soils. So you're getting a boost in yield, but importantly, if you look at what the, in terms of the phosphorus application, anywhere from 40 to 50% less phosphorus applied per year, resulting in, if you look at loss, upwards of 90% less phosphorus loss per acre per year. So you're getting a 15% boost in corn, you're applying a lot less fertilizer, so that you're saving half of your fertilizer bill, and you're losing 90% less phosphorus per acre. That, to me, is the definition of sustainable agriculture. You have economic sustainability, so your input costs are less, you're growing more corn, and you're protecting the waters of the local rivers and ultimately Lake Erie. But for us, what's next, beyond targeting in small-scale watersheds, large basins, we really are, where the science is next, is we have to start being able to target within fields. We have to understand whether inherent risks within a crop field and where we can apply the right practice in the right place. So what you're seeing here is an example where NRCS's geospatial lab is able to develop these kind of maps for our field staffs, where we look at the underlying soil profiles. What you see there on the left is a soil map of a farm field, and you can see then the color coding, the different soil types. And each one of the soil types has a different inherent capacity to both grow food and also lose both sediments and nutrients. And so on average, this producer applied 36 pounds of phosphorus per acre evenly across those farm fields. But again, you can see on the right-hand side there, on the soil types, there's a vast difference between both yield, so as low as 109 bushel per acre on average, or as high as 217 bushel per acre on average, depending on the soil type. But critically, the P there is, what was left the field, the phosphorus that applied, what left the field in grain? So if you have a risky soil, even though you may have applied on average 36 pounds, only 15 of those pounds are leaving in the grain. The rest are left in the field, potentially to leach or to be lost through surface loss. So if you were to apply through using precision ag, precision conservation techniques, it really then allows our planners to come in and really talk about both application of fertilizer, using precision ag technologies, but also even talking about maybe there's some parts of the field you don't want to even farm. Why plant? Let's start talking about some of the other USDA programs, like the Conservation Reserve Program or the Easement Program, where no matter what you do, that corner of the field, this inclusion will never be profitable. Stop planting it, stop wasting your money in fertilizer, let's put it into a conservation use. So we're also coming up with a new tool, conservation planning tool. We're trying to upgrade NRCS's conservation planning capacities. So we're piloting this year a new tool, we're calling the Resource Stewardship Evaluation. What this is, is a lot going on there. But basically, what we're trying to bring to a farmer or rancher is a higher-end product. So we're trying to say, what's your level of stewardship for your soils? What's your level of stewardship for your both water quality and quantity, air quality, and wildlife habitat? So five basic metrics. NRCS has had quality planning criteria for all those metrics, underlying capacity of, you know, soil condition index, your wind erosion, water erosion, et cetera. So we've normalized all these different tools and metrics to give back a producer, basically a printout on how, what's their level of stewardship, at the current, what's their baseline level of performance? And then we can start to run different scenarios, different options for the producer, and give them a plan-to-state. So it gives them back real-time information on what their current level of performance is, and then gives them real-time information on what, if different options and scenarios they want to do, where they can take their performance. So a real-world example, this is out of New Jersey, where we piloted this last year. You can see there on the left is a leased field, this is a producer that had an annual lease, a one-year lease, rented it from a local unit of government. And you can see that the condition of this land was not very good. Bad soils, highly eroded, and impacting local water supplies. We went out and ran the evaluation tool on his operation. You can see in the dark green or lighter green where his state was, and he was really not meeting the NRCS recommendation levels for management. So he was about to lose his lease. He went back to the local unit of government and said, you know, give me one more chance. I promise you, I'm going to do the right thing. He showed him the lesser, the NRCS evaluation, and then what the plan-to-state was. He didn't just get a one-year lease, the county actually gave him a five-year lease. So now that land is going to be kept in production, he's put it into a rotational beef grazing operation, protecting the waters, but importantly, keeping this land in active agriculture, contributing to the local economy and the local food supply. So switching now to innovation tools, where we're going with our tool capacity, through this committee's leadership, we have a program called the Conservation Innovation Grants Program, CIG, which in my view is really the venture capital, if you will, of conservation, where we're really taking high-risk, high-reward opportunities, providing 50/50 cost-share grants to farm organizations, universities, nonprofits, for-profit companies, all trying to advance innovative solutions, new tools, and approaches for conservation. The gentleman here is Dennis Carmen, and he's from the White River Irrigation District in Arkansas. He partnered up with a number of other farmers, as well as Environmental Defense Fund, California Rice Commission, Windwalk International, and some other partner organizations, including American Carbon Registry. And what they've come up with is an enhanced way to grow rice. They were focused on methane emissions and trying to reduce methane emissions from rice production, but also trying to save water. And they piloted different management techniques, and they came up with an approach that would reduce methane emissions by half, a 50% reduction in methane gas emissions, but then also 18% water savings by maintaining or enhancing your yield in rice. They then developed a protocol where they can then go to California, the California Air Resources Board has this greenhouse gas registry, where now they've developed the first-in-the-nation ag crop-based protocol, where now rice farmers, whether you're in California or Arkansas, can sell credits to the California Air Resources Board. So it's an additional revenue stream for rice country. So this guy is not only able to grow rice, he's now able to sell methane credits to the California Air Board. In Cape Cod, there's Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association. Through CIG, they developed an online tool, it's an irrigation system management tool, where they have sensors out in the vines in the cranberry pond there, where they're able to monitor in real-time air temperature in different climatic conditions. And this is about better managing the irrigation of this cranberry production system. They're able to save per frost event, so they use sprinklers to spray the vines, much like wine viticulture, you're protecting the vines during frost events, upwards of 9,000 gallons per acre per frost event. So over the course of a growing season, this technology allows the producer to save upwards of 280,000 gallons per acre. Huge success story. Talked about precision conservation, we've also invested in a lot of precision ag conservation solutions. This is an example, this is called Adapt N, it's a collaborative of Cornell University, Pennsylvania State University, Purdue University, a USDA ag research service lab, Iowa Soybean Association, and some other partners. And this is different modules that they can provide for producers, where it gives them real-time information on their application of nitrogen. So it gives them in-season, infield nitrogen application advice that takes into account climate, near-real-time weather conditions, the previous applications, manures and fertilizers, their soil types, their management systems, ultimately really trying to make that, each field and each subcomponent of a field profitable, maxing out your profit, minimizing loss. In this case, loss being both money and nitrogen. So in the early pilots, they were able to save upwards of 20 to 30 pounds of nitrogen per acre while protecting and maintaining yield. Finally, soil health, as we've talked about previously, the Midwest Cover Crop Council in partnership with the Conservation Technology Information Center, CTIC, they developed a multi-state online tool, it's called the Cover Crop Selection Tool, where it's for producers in Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Wisconsin, and Minnesota. You can go online, they identify where their operation is, what their management system is, what their business objectives are, and the tool then recommend different cocktails of cover crop seed mixtures that are appropriate for their climate and their cropping system, but also help them apply these cover crops in a way that'll be even more effective. And as we've talked, cover crops are really important and part of the overall conservation soil health management system. So this is a picture of a field from Indiana. Rodney Rulon is the producer, and this is his field. He's part of a family operation where they manage in total 600,000 acres of row crop in Indiana. They have adopted cover crops in residue management systems, no-till system in operation. And he's penciled out, he believes he's saving over $100 an acre by using soil health management practices. This is saving wear and tear in his steel, saving fuel costs, his energy costs, saving fertilizer and other input costs, and he's saving $100 a year in cash, it's over $600,000 a year more profit in a year for his family operation. And we've also talked about how soil health and these cover crops can improve the resiliency of crop fields, and how by increasing the soil organic matter, it really creates, turns those crop fields into reservoirs where it can actually hold and retain water. If you look at hypothetically, all cropland in the United States, if you increase the soil organic matter in the cropland in the United States by 1%, you're able then turn those crop fields into underground reservoirs. You'd be able to hold in those, just a 1% increase would increase the water holding capacity of soils to hold the same amount of water that flows over Niagara Falls for 150 days. Huge amount of water. What we're seeing here is out of Brookings County, South Dakota, side-by-side fields, one using conventional tillage on the right, on the left, no-till, high residue management. And you can see after a one-inch rain event, on the right, you have heavy ponding, that producer's literally lost tons of topsoil. You can actually see where he's got some of his beans are coming up, they're drowned out. On the left, beans are looking really healthy, coming in, all that water's been captured and stored in the soils for later in the summer months when it's hot and humid, and that crop is going to need water. So the CTIC I mentioned earlier, and ARS went out and surveyed producers in the Cornbelt. And if you recall back in 2012, it was a very severe drought, and they asked one simple question, did you use a part of your rotation, cover crop or not? And what they got back was, okay, what was the yield? No cover crop with cover crop. And what you see is your corn yield in upwards of 10 to 14% boost in yield just by adopting cover crops as part of your rotation, which to us is then a signal that those producers that have cover crops that are protecting the soils, feeding the soils, are improving yield and improving their bottom lines. And finally, next-generation partnerships. We've already talked, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Lujan Grisham, we've talked about the importance and the power of the Resource Conservation Partnership Program. I'm really proud of NRCS's contribution to this, but more proud frankly about the robust response from the huge array of partners across the country. Sportsmanship organizations, universities, cities, counties, water utilities, hospitals, churches, I mean, you name it, there's over 2,000 different partner organizations have come forward. Many of them have never worked in agriculture before, and they never really know how to approach agriculture, and they're teaming up with ag associations, agro businesses, farmers and ranchers themselves to put in place really exciting conservation solutions. So Ms. Lujan Grisham, as you mentioned with the aseca, I'm very happy to point out, one of the examples of a project we already have rolling out here is the Aseca de las Ojas. And this is an example that folks, once you unlock the potential, they're ready to roll. And this is a partnership with the Mexico Association of Conservation Districts and Interstate Stream Commission, and they were ready to rock. So this is on a 300-year-old aseca, you can see in this case is an old rusted-out, inefficient corrugated pipe, very leaky, not very effective. And we've already installed, you can see here, the welded steel pipe, we're also re-lining the ditches, the irrigation systems with concrete, making it hyper-efficient. So that means even more presentes are going to be able to irrigate off this aseca simultaneously than previously, but also ultimately to save a lot more water overall, so the system is going to be even more successful. And these folks, this was installed at the end of January. So this is, you know, in a matter of months, they were ready to roll and get solutions on the ground, be able to help the aseca already this coming growing season. And then in South Carolina, we have had initially a pilot with U.S. Endowment for Forestry in Sustainable Communities. What you're seeing here is the Smith family, this is Oliver and Martin Smith in Marbo County, South Carolina. They're third-generation farmers, limited resource producers, they have 400 acres, much of it is forested. And what we're doing with, in partnership with the U.S. Endowment, U.S. Forest Service, Center for Airs Property, Federation of Southern Cooperatives, and some other partners, first helping families such as the Smith family come in and establish clear title, clear ownership to their lands. Once they have clear title, that unlocks the capacity to come work with USDA. We can then come in with our financial assistance programs and put in place really effective forest management practices that's going to improve the health of their forests for long-term timber production, giving them long-term economic benefits, but in the meantime, giving the community water quality benefits, fire protection benefits, air quality benefits, and at-risk species benefits. And then finally, to me, which is really one of the historic ultimate partnership examples, and it's something that I hope they're going to be writing textbooks about, and this is really about how producers and a huge array of partners came forward and did something about the potential listing of sage grouse out in the West. And I know it feels like this is a past, but this is something that is so historic and something I'm incredibly proud of. And this is something where NRCS was actually just a small component of it. So in the wake of the candidate decision where the sage grouse is listed as a potential species for listing under the Nature Species Act, we launched what was then the Sage Grouse Initiative. We had over 100 different partner organizations come forward and be part of this. So it lost the NRCS identity and became a partner-led, really a huge success story. So what this is, is a map, the green areas are inhabited sage grouse range, the dark areas are what Fish and Wildlife Service calls the priority areas for conservation. So this is before we had a lot of really advanced tools, we have some pretty good tools for targeting, but we didn't have what we have, what I'm going to talk about in a second. What you're seeing here is then how the partnership, the locally-led approach on this landscape, targeted both financial assistance, which are the aqua blue-colored dots, and easements, which are the rust-colored orange dots. And 100% of the practices were put in place in inhabited range. Three-quarters of the practices were in the priority areas for conservation. The scale is unprecedented. Just in five years, the partnership put in place 4.4 million acres of sustainable ranching practices across the West in 11 states. Over 1,100 producers stepped forward, volunteered, and wanted to be part of the solution. So what here is then is a new tool we just released last week, it's in partnership with Google. We're bringing Google Earth technologies that's allowing USDA conservation districts, conservation organizations to use the Google Earth capabilities. We have different data layers, I'm not going to, don't worry, I'm not going to walk you through what's going on here in this slide. But basically, you can both work at a national level, regional level, state level, county level, field level, where you can zoom in, for example here, looking at what's going on in this landscape. In this case, one of the main threats for sage grouse is conifer invasion, conifer encroachment, where these conifers and juniper are coming in and invading what was then at one point sage range habitat and turning it into a forested canopy. Well, it's not very good for livestock. The conifers are really thirsty, they soak up all the groundwater, they change the hydrology in those mountainous areas and choke out the seeps and springs. But it turns out sage grouse don't like trees either because of the raptor perches, and as soon as the conifers come in, as little as a 4% tree canopy cover, the grouse are gone. So we can use this tool, zoom in, identify areas where we want to treat. In this case, we come in like in 2012, and you can see how we cut out, worked with a rancher, cut out his inholdings, cleared it of the sagebrush. That's pretty impressive. What's more impressive, though, is when we radio collared a sage grouse hen in Oregon, and she flew south down to Northern California for the summer, you could see where she hung out in the summer. So this is a radiopilot chart showing where the sage hen spent her time kind of on a shopping trip around the inholding, where apparently she read up on our sage grouse initiative, sagebrush initiative literature, where she guessed, she understood, where she needs to go, where you cut out the trees, that's where I'm supposed to hang out. So she flew in, and you could see how she went around and took advantage of the new habitat that just had recently opened up, returned both for ranching, but in this case for critical wildlife habitat. So if you take this kind of success story and you multiply that by So if you take this kind of success story and you multiply that by 1,000, it's an example of how ranchers really delivered unprecedented solutions in this landscape on a voluntary basis. And it's the view for me and my colleagues at NRCS that it's not in spite of ranchers, it's because of the American rancher. We did not list the sage grouse in September of 2015. Likewise, in Montana, where ranchers in the Sentinel and Big Hole Valleys, there was a fish, this case is Arctic Fluvial Grayling, at risk. It was a candidate for listing in Endangered Species Act. It was down to last 50-mile segment of the stream. And we put in place voluntary conservation practices with the ranching community. You can see in this chart, over the course of five years, the populations, depending on which subpopulation to look at, either increased 500 to 900% in five years. Result, not listed on the Endangered Species Act because of voluntary incentive-based conservation. The Oregon Chub, this guy should be wearing a cape, actually, because he's the first fish species in American history not to be taken off the nature species list because it went extinct because we brought it back from the brink. Voluntary USDA conservation programs made this possible. It was down to less than 1,000 chub left in Oregon. Wetlands reserve practices and acres restored, but also upland water quality practices were put in place. Today's fish population is 140,000 chub and growing, taken off the nature species list because of voluntary acts of conservation. And this is a story of love. This is the Louisiana Black Bear, which was listed, this is actually the teddy bear that President Roosevelt could not bring himself to shoot because it was so cute and charismatic, listed as endangered. It was down to less than 200. It was in separated populations that were not connected anymore, so they didn't have the opportunity to mate. And USDA came in, put in place over 210,000 acres of bottom wood, bottom land hardwood habitat to reconnect those populations through CRP and wetland reserve opportunities. Today, the populations are reconnected, making highways of love, where these bears, the bears are now back to over 100, 800 bears and growing, proposed for delisting under the Endangered Species Act because of voluntary acts of landowners in the Arkansas, Mississippi, and Louisiana regions. And ultimately, the Peter Rabbit, New England Cotton Till Rabbit, again, because of private forestland owners in New England, stepped forward voluntarily, put in place young forest restoration projects on their lands. Again, DOI earlier this past fall decided not to list this candidate species on the Endangered Species Act, not in spite of private landowners, but because of the voluntary acts of private landowners and the results they delivered in their communities. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for going over my time a little bit. Like I said, there's a lot more. This is enough I thought I could get away with. I appreciate your interest and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, sir.
Well, Chief, thank you so much, and really appreciate your presentation, and congratulations for what you've accomplished with the Fish and Wildlife Service hasn't been able to do. So when it comes to endangered species, you set a good, great model there. I'm going to take the liberty of the first five minutes of questioning. Chief Weller, one of the most innovative programs, in my opinion, to come along in some time, is the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And that was a key component of the House's conservation title. Now, one of the main purposes of the program was to help producers in meeting and avoiding the need for national, state, and local natural resource regulatory requirements related to agriculture production. So my question is straightforward. Do you think the program is helping producers deal with the regulatory requirements? And can you give some specific examples of projects that are doing so?
The short answer is yes. I think it is going to help and be tremendous. And what is really, I think, the secret of the sauce here is that instead of NRCS determining what is the species or fish and wildlife, determining, well, from the National Office, this is where we're going to go work, what the program does is it gives local partners, local communities, local farming, ranching community, forest landowners to step forward and say, you know what? We're concerned about, in this case, to your question, regulatory impacts or risks we have in our area, and here's the help that we need. So it really allows them, puts them in the driver's seat to design projects to meet their water quality or air quality or habitat concerns. And then it allows opportunities for other partners, whether private organizations, both foreign nonprofit organizations, to step forward and leverage their capacities, their scientific tools, their boots-on-the-ground know-how, and then buddy up with NRCS and go out and get after it. So specifically, there are, again, coming back to the sage grouse example, there's at least two RCP projects that I'm aware of, maybe three, where there are specifically calls out endangered species act concerns, where it's in Colorado, Oregon, and Nevada, where we have RCP projects in place that are being partner-led, locally-led, but it's specifically to address sage grouse restoration needs. And again, it's because of the concerns about needing to maintain pause momentum to head off the pass any cause for listing of the greater sage grouse in the future. That's one example. There are others in the longleaf pine ecosystems of the Southeast where there are a lot of species, whether the red cockaded woodpecker, the gopher tortoise, and then there's all sorts of aquatic species, different mushrooms and fish that are at risk for listing also under the Endangered Species Act. And they specifically call out the importance of RCP to leverage USDA and non-federal investments to restore the longleaf pine ecosystem for both forest product production, but also importantly for habitat for both at-risk and game species. So I think at least about a third, if you look at all 199 projects, and they self-identify what the resource concerns are for them, off the top of my head, I think it's about a third of our projects to date where they specifically call out at-risk species habitat as one of the core criteria why they want this project to be successful.
Thank you. In addition to the farmers and ranchers, there are some 22 million family forest owners who own over one-third of our forests and who grow almost 50% of the wood that we use in the United States. Unlike farmers and ranchers, often these owners aren't actively engaged in their land management, and we know that if they aren't actively managing their land, that this can cause issues such as insect, invasive species, non-invasive species, disease infestations, wildfire threats. What innovation approaches is NRCS using to reach these owners and get them involved in production as well as conservation?
So we've talked a little bit about RCP, but there are efforts also outside of that one program authority, where we're really trying to work with state foresters, but also non-federal partners. In this case, like, it could be the U.S. Endowment for Forestry. There's a whole collaborative of folks, for example, in the longleaf pine ecosystem again, that are focused on restoring the health of the longleaf pine forests. I mentioned New England and New York forests as well, where there's locally-led approach, whether it's a wildlife organization or forestry group, they have the on-ground expertise, they have the people in the field that can really help us reach those private landowners that we may not have yet the relationships with. But there's also, I'm proud of our partnership actually with another federal agency, in this case with the Forest Service. And historically, our agencies have sort of been ships passing in the night, where we perhaps may not have worked as well together as we should have. We're now trying to be much more mindful and purposeful of working together on both sides of the property line. So when we go into a community, into a forest, or a county, or a watershed, we want to make sure, if the Forest Service, we're going to go in and do wildfire treatments on their side of the property line, we also then get the private landowners access to equip and other financial assistance, so they too can treat their forests, so that whole basin is then protected and restored. And so we have almost over 40 projects now across the country where NRCS, Forest Service, state foresters, and other partners are coming in, all contributing our money together, working on both sides of the private property line and the public property line to restore the health of a whole forest, treating it as a true forest as opposed to just different property owners.
Thank you, Chief. My time has expired. Now I recognize General Lee from New Mexico for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief Weller, for your enthusiasm about all the range of possibilities, and that collaboration and voluntary efforts can produce real results. And I really appreciate that, and I'm hoping for the same kind of environment on looking at ways to use our agroecosystems to capture atmospheric carbon. And actually, New Mexico State University and one of their research scientists, Dr. David Johnson, has been looking at this issue very specifically. And so far, some key findings from his research is that the restoration of beneficial soil microbial communities and the relationships that they develop then with plants builds, in fact, healthy soils that can capture significant, I think there is the operative word, significant amounts of carbon from the atmosphere, and can also reduce the rate at which soil microbial communities respire this carbon. And so my understanding is that he's currently reaching out to EPA for an agreement to explore this biotechnology and recognition of the increases in soil carbon as legitimate carbon offsets. So I'm interested in hearing whether NRCS has been working with EPA to promote soil carbon sequestration.
We have been working very hard on soil carbon sequestration. I would not say we've worked with EPA, but we have worked with land grant extensions, with a lot in the agricultural community, and this is really part of our bigger perspective on soil health, where we're trying to understand better the biota that live below the surface of soil, those microbes and critters that live below the surface, and how important they are for helping plants in both pulling in the carbon, but also attenuate the residue and basically mulch it down and transform that residue, plant residue, into soil organic carbon. And while we have a pretty good understanding of it, it's actually a burgeoning field. We're really partnering with a lot of scientists at both USDA and outside of the department and the university research community to better understand those properties. But we've also partnered with organizations to help, much like with the rice example I had on rice methane, where through better management, for example, of pastures and grazing lands, how can livestock operators also take advantage of carbon markets? And so we've, again, through the Conservation Innovation Grants Program, we've had some grants that have helped invest in that, helped develop the protocols, so that if you have a grazing operation, what, how much carbon is actually being pulled out of the atmosphere by those pastures, by those rangeland vegetation, and ultimately stored in the carbon, soil profile as carbon, soil organic carbon, and ultimately then selling those credits to a carbon exchange. And so one of the first examples of that was in North Dakota in partnership with General Motors. General Motors actually purchased and retired several tens of thousands of carbon credits based on these protocols that the Conservation Innovation Grants helped develop. And so this is then payments from General Motors that ultimately end up with North Dakota grazers. So they're ultimately going to get additional revenue source. You keep those working lands working.
Can you give me, Chief Weller, kind of an idea about what the annual grant could look like? I mean, how much money are we spending across the country, roughly?
Across the country? In that one example, it's just an initial pilot. GM didn't release how much money they spent on it, but it was in the millions of dollars. And ultimately, those ranchers are going to be getting an annuity payment, and it's modest.
This is great. So, and this is exactly what I want to hear, although I would encourage you to work with all federal agencies so that you have the same kind of effort where we don't traditionally work as well as we could, certainly, in leveraging the federal partnerships, taking the models that you've used in the community and making sure that they apply across all the different federal jurisdictions. But I'm really interested in finding a way to move beyond, and it's not a complaint, move beyond kind of a pilot and think about programmatic aspects with some specificity and some tools and resources. And I've only got, this always happens, Mr. Chairman, only 30 seconds left, but if you could follow up with us about some of those ideas and strategies so that this committee could look at whether or not we can partner with you to make sure that they're available to more states and more communities, because I think that this is a real viable aspect and could really do a whole lot to reach your ultimate goals of healthy soil. So thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate it. I yield back with six seconds. Can I credit those?
You can get credit for those.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I don't know what to do with it, but you can get credit for it. General Lee yields back. Now I recognize Dr. Benetek from Michigan for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Chief Weller, for being here. I too think that this RCPP model is really the way to go. And to me, you know, I've seen similar public-private partnerships do a much better job in delivering the service that they're trying to deliver than government regulators. To me, that a lot of times in Washington, when the government starts doing things, do things from so far away that they don't take into account the regional and local concerns. And by having a public-private partnership, if it's for charitable works, or nutrition, or soil conservation, getting all the people involved and showing them how this is advantageous to them, providing leadership, and that's really the way to go with, I think, all government or a large majority of government services. So I'm happy that this seems to be successful. A question I have is, now that this has started, I think you've done a couple of rounds of conservation projects. How is it going? How have things changed since you've been there? Tell me, have you learned anything? Is there anything that we should do differently with the next farm bill? Or what are some of the challenges that you're seeing that maybe it could make us do something even better the next time?
Well, what I've seen is really an evolution. So we've done two rounds, you're correct, sir, of awards, and we're actually about to hopefully release the announcement for the third round in the near future, in the next couple of weeks, where we feel we have really positive momentum, and the response from partners across the country have been immense. So for every dollar that, you know, we could award into a project, a partner project, the demand was seven, eightfold for that $1. So it's very competitive, which to me just shows that there's huge unlocked potential, untapped potential, that really we can better harness. But people also are very excited. When you give them opportunity to really take the lead and to design projects that work in their communities, to your point, you're going to have much more enduring and I think a quicker success. So from the first round, both--
It's a better way of doing things than simply regulating from Washington, as far as I can see.
From our experience, I mean, we are inherently a locally-led agency, so we really take the heart, first understanding at the farm gate, what that producer wants to do in that community, that county, what the local work group wants to do, and that state, what are the priorities in that state. Really, that's our history and our culture at the agency, but I think it fits well to the point you're making, yes.
So can you name a particular challenge or problem that some producers are quoting that are making them hesitate to join this? Has it all been positive?
From what I've heard, it's, I don't want to overstate it's all positive. Of course, there's growing pains, and some projects are quicker out of the gate than others, but I think holistically, if you look at the projects, the overwhelming number of projects have been successful. I think some producers, though, may be reluctant in a state like Michigan where they hear about this, but they're a little, they're not sure who these partners are, they haven't heard of them, or they're, they just don't want to work with. It could be they don't want to work with the government, they don't want to work with NRCS, or they don't want to work with a different partner for whatever reason. That may be a reluctance. And so what the program still allows then is a producer, they don't want to work directly with the RCPP partnership. They can still come to the local conservation district and still get access to assistance directly that way. So there are ways that the committee has built into the program so that you don't necessarily have to work either with the partnership, you can work privately as an individual as well. So overall, I've heard the response from, the feedback from both our staff, but also producers around the country, has been positive.
Well, would you agree with me in my assessment that this public-private partnership and voluntary conservation is a better way to conserve our land and improve production for farmers?
I will say that a voluntary approach is a great way to do conservation.
All right. I'll yield back to the remainder of my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
General Lee yields back. I recognize Mr. Peterson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Chief, I want to talk a little bit about this PL566 situation. You had apparent, the appropriators apparently had asked you for a list of projects, and they didn't get them for a while, and now you've given them one. Is that part of why there wasn't any appropriation, because they hadn't gotten these project lists before, or do you know why they didn't?
I do not know why they did not include appropriations for 566 in the 2016--
Do you know why the administration didn't request anything in the budget?
I don't know specifically why, but I can surmise. So the President, to your point, in the 2016 budget requested $200 million for 566 for the watershed operations program. Seemed that it was not successful, that the appropriations committee did not appropriate any money to the program. In the 2017 budget, the President's budget includes no money for 566, but instead of taking money, in this case, $200 million for 566, for the first time, what the President's done is, not just President Obama, but a President has not chipped, has not cut the farmable conservation programs. So there's zero cut to the equip program, zero cut to conservation stewardship program, zero cut to the easement program. So it's the first time that's ever happened in a budget, which, as you understand, Mr. Peterson, then through the budget process, that's actually, they had to find money to make that happen. So it was a decision, I think, in the end, where to put that money, and instead of the 566, where it didn't get appropriations, they decided to keep that money in the farmable programs.
Well, we appreciate, you know, the 566, or the RCPP that was designated up in the valley, they're using that, some of that money for planning for these 566 projects, and I think there's 12 of them. And I think there's 12 of them that are in process. You know, and I've been at a couple of meetings here in the last two months, where they've been working on these. But they're not in your plan here. So I don't know if that's because they're not completed yet, or what. But, but one of the concerns they have, and I have, is there going to be money for these once the planning is done, which is going to be in a year or two? And what is the prognosis for money for 566 going into the future, do you think, in terms of funding? Because there's a lot, on both sides of the border, this is what people want to use to try to help manage this flooding situation.
So historically, it's been a hugely successful program. And you're probably aware, we've helped install over 12,000 projects and facilities around the country, and I think 48 states. So it has a very proud heritage. Unfortunately, it hasn't been funded, not received appropriations for seven, eight years. But if you look back at the success of these projects, it has been very effective. So a resuscitated renewed program, I think, would be really powerful. And that's in part why the President included it in his 16 budget. But also through your leadership, it's in the RCPP, which is why we're now having some success, at least doing the engineering work on those facilities, future facilities in the Red River Valley. Regarding future, I guess that's up, whether there's going to be future resources, that's up to both Congress appropriations. And then for that specific project, they can reapply for the next phase. So when you get ready for construction, they would be eligible to come back and reapply for RCPP funds in the future. It's a competitive program, but it's a great project. So I can't guarantee, but they were successful first round.
Well, they're moving ahead with the hopeful attitude that it's going to work out. But one of the other things that came up that is continuing frustration is that is the lack of coordination between NRCS and the Corps. And, you know, there was a memorandum of understanding that was done between the Corps and NRCS back in 2012. And I thought this had all gotten worked out. And so I go to this meeting in January and find out that the whole thing has been broken down and not working. And, you know, why can't we get to a situation where we can have the Corps and the NRCS come to a determination? You know, I mean, I thought your guy in Minnesota had it worked out that the Corps was going to go along with whatever NRCS came up with. And then I find out that she wasn't doing that. You know, and they've wasted like two years screwing around with this deal, you know? And you've got another situation where they've been trying to get some kind of a conservation gateway to try to get things worked out between you and FSA and RMA, and that's, I'm not sure, working either. So how do we, how do we get to the, you know, can you help us get to a way that we can get these projects approved?
So I can't specifically to what's happening with the Corps. I can only manage what I can manage, which is the NRCS side of that relationship. But I hear you, and I will follow up with our state conservation--
And you work with those folks, right?
I've met with the Corps commander recently about that MOU, from the national perspective. But it's also, as you understand, it really depends on which Corps district you're in. And each district is different. So it sounds like we need to do some follow-up with the Corps--
But you understand now, and I hope the people will understand, why some of us are so concerned about this waters of the U.S. Because if that thing goes through, and we have 300 more pages of regulations, you think we've got a problem now? You know, because this will just give an opportunity for everybody to not agree to anything, you know? So, anyway, whatever you can do to help us with that would be appreciated.
Will do.
And if you can get our projects on the list, it would help, okay? Yield back.
Gentlemen, yield is back. Mr. Allen from Georgia, recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief, for joining us. And obviously, very proud of the things you've done. And thank you for your presentation. Obviously, the improvement you've made in a lot of these properties are pretty amazing. And one of the things that, you know, you talked about how the working relationship that you have with farmers and ranchers, and how there's proven to be a great benefit to conservation. But, you know, about a third of our forests, about 50% of the wood in the U.S. is owned by often owners that aren't actively engaged in land management. And we know if they're not actively engaged in this process that problems can happen, like insect diseases, wildlife threats, and that sort of thing. What is NRCS using to reach these owners and get them involved in the production of, as well as conservation?
So trying to identify who those non-operating landowners are, the absentee landlords, is a challenge for us. And it's really, particularly on the conservation stewardship side, as to your point, when they're not there on the land, it's hard to know year to year what's actually happening in your forest or in your fields. So we've tried some examples in some other states, not in the southeast, but in Midwest, an initial try at this in three different states, where we worked with the Farm Service Agency, and we sent out mailers. So they have lists of who the landlords are. And so we figured out who are the folks we wanted to actually touch that we hadn't heard from in a while. And we tried different methods, basically postcard mailing, to reach out to these landlords, and tried different techniques to try and get their interest. And we actually had a pretty good response from folks. Once they understood that we really wanted to talk to them, and we're not there to take something, we're actually here to offer something, we got a pretty good response. But a lot of times, as you know, those landlords also live out of state. So it's about reconnecting them back to their land or their property, and then trying to work out, either through their tenant, and oftentimes it's through their tenant is the best way to reach those landlords, equipping them with the tools, whether it's like that resource stewardship evaluation I showed earlier, where you empower the tenant to then go to the landlord and say, here's what I'm going to do for your property, I might get even better. Or I'd like to flip that around and also try out, working with the landlord, do you know what happened to your property while you're away? Here's where your property is being managed, and where would you like to take it? So trying to identify who those folks are, trying new techniques to get their attention, and then equipping the tenants with great information so they can then go talk to their landlord about investments maybe they can both jointly make to enhance the value of the property through better soil quality or better forest health. We're trying a lot of different techniques, but it's a challenge that, I'll admit, we're not yet fully up to speed on.
What sort of impact into that group are you making? I mean, is it substantial impact, or you, is it still a lot to do?
It's still a lot to do. It's been pretty modest so far.
The pine straw industry is big in my district in Georgia. And, of course, we've got over 400 potential species in the South that we get listed on the endangered species list in the coming years. And, you know, this could, well, some of our pine straw folks are a little concerned about this, as well as, you know, some things that crop up from time to time. As far as those industries, are you working with the folks in that industry? And what, what kind of things are we doing to, so those folks can continue to do business?
So, yes, we are. We're trying to work with the timber and the pine straw industries, understanding the importance for local cultural practices, but also economic opportunities. And the best form of conservation is one that actually improves the bottom line of a landowner or business. And that's going to be the more enduring conservation treatment. And so it's helping, whether it's, to our previous conversation, an absentee landowner, or to the actual landowners who are there on site and working with the industry, how do you ensure the health of that forest so it can produce the pine straw long-term? What are the different practices then we can come in to either do, you know, tree stand improvements, prescribe fire to ensure you're getting, treating the undergrowth, understory, but also ensuring the health of those forests? Fire breaks, other practices we can put in place, working with the industry, and where to cite those practices, where priority areas that for the industry is important to restore the vitality of those stands. So there's a lot of different ways we can approach it and tackle it. But yes, it's critical that we understand what the priorities are of industry, and if there are opportunities to leverage, do the outreach. The industry knows, how's the contact information for a lot of those landlords, landowners? And they have ways to reach out to them and encourage them to participate in our programs in ways that we can't. So it's a great collaborative approach.
Good, good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I yield back.
Thank you, gentlemen. Chief, thank you so much for your, for your leadership. You know, as we look at, I think, one of the, one of the issues that citizens, where they, and rightfully so, you know, they evaluate, they scrutinize government. You know, we talk a lot about programs, and today you've talked a lot about outcomes. And I think we all appreciate that. I mean, measurable outcomes. You know, what is, you know, in terms of what is the return on investment for all the work that we tried to do within the Farm Bill, providing tools for you, your agency? And I think, and I, I think probably safely talking on behalf of all the members who are on this subcommittee, we appreciate the fact that, you know, you're a good steward in the work that you do, and you're looking for outcomes, looking to deliver outcomes, just not to promulgate or continue business the way we've always done it in terms of programs. And that's, that's greatly appreciated. So thank you for being here today, and thanks for your continued leadership.
Thank you very much, sir. And that's, I hope, to give this committee some comfort, but also the taxpayer comfort, that their resources are being used wisely and well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the, our next panel witnesses to the table. Give you a few minutes to get settled in, and then we'll, we'll proceed. I want to welcome our, our panel, and thank you so much for each of you of taking the time of coming here to, to present on this topic today. It's my pleasure to introduce our next panel witnesses to the table. We have Ms. Rachel Dawson, senior member, Delaware River, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, Washington, D.C. Mr. Frank Price, owner of Franken Sims Price Ranch in Sterling City, Texas. Mr. Rich Bowman, Director of Government Relations for the Naval Nature Conservancy in Lansing, Michigan. And Mr. Kent Rodilious, Vice President of Agricultural Drainage Management Coalition in Wilmar, Minnesota. Welcome to each of you. Witnesses are reminded to, that the members have your, your written testimony, that you're, and thank you for that. We had that ahead of time, and remind to limit oral presentations to five minutes. All written statements are included in the record. And Ms. Dawson, please begin whenever you're ready.
Sure, thank you. Chairman Thompson, Ranking Member Lou Hungrysham, and members of the Subcommittee, as the Senior Manager for the Delaware River Program, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's NIFWIF's agriculture partnerships in the Delaware River watershed. Established by Congress in 1984 to leverage public-private investments, NIFWIF currently works with 15 federal partners and more than 45 corporate and foundation partners to conserve fish, wildlife, and their habitats. To date, we have funded nearly 15,500 conservation projects across all 50 states and U.S. territories, 900 of those alone in the last fiscal year. Today, I would like to share with you some of our innovative work with farmers, ranchers, and foresters. Three years ago, the William Penn Foundation of Philadelphia formed a partnership with NIFWIF, Drexel University's Academy of Natural Sciences, and the Open Space Institute to design and help implement an innovative voluntary initiative to improve water quality and habitat health across the Delaware River watershed. The watershed crosses four state borders and provides drinking water for 15 million people, including in Trenton, Philadelphia, Wilmington, and half the population of New York City. And it provides vital habitat for fish and wildlife and unparalleled recreation. To restore and protect these resources, the William Penn Foundation launched the Delaware River Watershed Initiative in 2014 with an initial three-year, $35 million investment, which targeted eight subwatersheds for focused restoration and conservation. Selected through an unprecedented assessment of on-the-ground potential to improve water quality, these subwatersheds will serve as real-life laboratories in which concentrated restoration and conservation will be strategically implemented, leveraged, and monitored. Local partners have worked together to develop plans to implement the initiative and accelerate adoption of practices that improve and protect water quality. Chief, among the strategies for most of these subwatersheds is expanded NRCS voluntary forest management and farm conservation practices. One-size-fits-all conservation planning isn't an option for the region's diverse agriculture communities. Farms tend to be small, often fewer than 80 acres, and ownership is very complex. From the least in rotating farmland in southern New Jersey to plain-seck farmers wary of government cost-share programs in southeastern Pennsylvania, we have great variability in landowner and producer dynamics. And despite its position in a notably urban corridor, the region serves as a smorgasbord of agriculture production. From the Garden State's vegetable farms, orchards, and nurseries, to Pennsylvania's mushrooms, dairy farms, and tobacco fields, and to New York's vast private forests, critical for clean water, it truly has it all. As the initiative partners got to work on strategies to address the challenge of such variability, the launch of the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, RCPP, was a remarkably timely opportunity, tailor-made, to deliver expanded conservation with a complementary water quality benefit. Additionally, it was one that was particularly responsive to the aforementioned diversity. In late 2014, NIFWIF, in partnership with the American Farmland Trust and other partners, was awarded a five-year, $13 million RCPP to address water quality through the Delaware Watershed Working Lands Conservation Partnership, Protection Partnership. Of particular importance, the partnership is leveraging $17.6 million in resources from partners for a conservation impact that amounts to more than $30.6 million. There are four main reasons why we're excited about the RCPP opportunity in the Delaware. First, the partnership helps efficiently expand delivery of important farmable conservation and forest management programs in the region. Secondly, we are able to increase technical assistance in important places by growing the capacity of both traditional agriculture organizations like conservation districts and partner nonprofits who are honing their ability to work with projects and landowners. Third, and perhaps most importantly, RCPP affords the partnership an opportunity to work with NRCS to design applicant criteria and adjust rankings so that cost-share funds are available to the projects and places that will have the most benefit for water quality. And finally, the RCPP in Delaware is an excellent example of the power of leveraging private and public resources to do the most good. We are able to help producers achieve their conservation goals while also utilizing private funding to incentivize, for example, implementation by landowners who prefer not to use government funding, or to test innovative methods like conservation vouchers, bonus payments, and higher rates of cost share for implementing the highest priority practices. In only its first few months, the project is on its way towards its initial five-year goal to work with 1,100 landowners to implement conservation on at least 16,750 acres and to improve management of 20,000 acres of working forests. This partnership has the potential to dramatically accelerate conservation and to build a stronger, more capable network among the agricultural communities and local nonprofits in the region. While my testimony today is focused on the Delaware River watershed, let me close by mentioning NIFWIF's numerous other leveraging efforts to advance voluntary conservation on working lands. Among them are the Monarch Butterfly Conservation Fund, a partnership in Kentucky with Altria to help transition tobacco growers to continuous no-till, and the Gulf Coast Migratory Bird Habitat Initiative. In the interest of time, those details are included in my written testimony. And again, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the Subcommittee, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. 14 seconds.
You did fine. Thank you very much. And actually, you have, you have great details on those three, three, three other programs that you touched on very quickly that's included in our written testimony. So thank you for that. Mr. Price, go ahead and proceed, whenever you're ready.
My son and I operate a ranching enterprise raising sheep and cattle, as well as a hunting operation based in Sterling City, Texas. My son and I run the ranch, which dates back to 1876, with two goals in mind. The first is that the ranch must be operated on a standalone basis, where we follow a strict budget and expect the operation to show an annual profit. Our second goal, like many other ranchers, is to leave the land in better condition for future generations. We serve to make our ranch land sustainable, which increases productivity even after the land is utilized for grazing. Ranching in West Texas comes with its fair share of difficult times. However, we've been able to keep our operations sustainable during those hard times by utilizing voluntary conservation programs and applying management practices that enhance the operation. Drought is a common problem in West Texas, and it requires adaptability and forward-thinking to maintain the resources on the ranch. In 2011 and 2012, we were challenged with one of the worst droughts in a generation, 100 consecutive days of 100 degrees or higher. A total rainfall-- A total rainfall of 5 and 1/2 inches for the year. Water was virtually nonexistent. Wildfires were prevalent, but we were able to survive and remain sustainable because of our grazing management practices and the opportunity to work with NRCS's voluntary conservation programs to improve our ranch and make our grasslands resilient. By utilizing the conservation planning of the NRCS and the National Grazing Lands Coalition, in addition to the development of innovative grazing technologies, we have increased perennial grasses on the ranch, improved ground cover, greatly reduced soil erosion due to both wind and water, reduced labor inputs, and ensured adequate forage for the livestock and wildlife populations on the ranch. Furthermore, by implementing these programs, we were able to keep expenses down by lowering feed, fuel, equipment, and later labor costs, improving profitability of our operation. Through the help of NRCS and voluntary conservation programs, we have been able to make our ranch land more drought tolerant. We've achieved that by installing groundwater storage systems connected by an extensive pipeline system and improved our grasses on the ranch with utilizing brush control. We use a variety of ways to reduce brush by including prescribed burns, mechanical, and chemical treatment. We leave the large trees in place to create a savanna-type ranch land. And the resulting increased water availability, grass cover, and shading properties of the savanna landscape improves the welfare for the livestock, wildlife, and the ranchmen alike. Truly a win-win situation. When wildfire came through our ranch in 2011, we had to rebuild miles of fencing. Equip gave us the opportunity to reposition some of those fences to better adapt to our grazing program. One of the reasons Equip has become popular among ranchers is because it's a working lands program. Conservation programs that enhance the land's production do not limit its use for the best for both ranchers and conservation of our resources. CSP, Conservation Insurance Program, is another program that I use to improve my land, water, and wildlife habitats. The biggest point I'd like to make is that voluntary voluntary part of conservation programs is what really makes it work for ranchers. We've had excellent success in in using these programs, but just because the practices work for my family does not mean it's right for everybody. It's important that we keep these programs funded to safeguard their continued success, and above all else, these programs must stay voluntary. I believe that economic activity and conservation go hand in hand, and we are always looking for new innovative conservation programs that will have tangible benefits for the environment and help improve our ranching lands. USDA's conservation programs have been a great asset to cattle producers, and it is important that these programs continue to be implemented in the same practical, producer-friendly, voluntary manner for years to come. Together, we can sustain our country's natural resources and economic prosperity, ensuring our way of life for future generations. I appreciate the opportunity to visit to you and look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Mr. Price, thank you so much. Mr. Bowman, go ahead and proceed whenever you're ready. Five minutes.
Great. Thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member. I'm really pleased to be here. I wasn't sure at 6 o'clock, when it was 14 degrees and blowing snow sideways in Michigan, that I was going to make it, but we did get here. I want to give you a slightly different view on conservation and innovation, the nature conservancy. While we have agricultural projects all around the country and in a number of other countries, I'm going to focus on our work in Michigan. And one of the challenges that we face is that conservation isn't cheap. It has to be paid for. And our, we make our living based upon the fact that members and donors believe that we're making a difference, and that's why they write us a check and give us that money. And so, we ask ourselves all the time the question, how much conservation is enough? And how effectively are we actually getting conservation done? And as a result of that, we've made a lot of investment in recent years in tools. And rather than showing you slides, I actually have up on the screen live one of the tools that we developed that we're, we used in a project in a watershed in Michigan we did jointly with Coca-Cola. They actually provided us some private funding for this, and they were interested in buying water offsets for the water that they were using to make product. And we said, well, you could do it with, by paying farmers to do agricultural conservation. They said, no, you don't understand. We don't want to buy conservation practices. We want to buy gallons of water. And so, what this tool actually allowed the technician to do out in the field is to sit down with a producer in their living room, just like this, and zoom into their farm, and zoom into a field, and fairly quickly go in and select a producer's field. They went, did this, and then when they had selected the field, the tool brings up a pull-down menu. This is based upon, this predates Google Earth, so this is actually based on ArcGIS and the the NRCS's soils maps and topography maps, and it tells you the size of the field and the relative parcels. And then you just go in and and tell how you're currently farming the field. We'll say conventional row crop agriculture, and the producer's considering switching to no-till. And it tells you, and when you tell it to calculate, in about half a second, how much the increase or decrease in groundwater recharge will be as a result of that practice on that field. And Coke, actually, in this product, project, was paying farmers, I think it was $1.60 per thousand gallons, or something like that. And so, as Mr. Price mentioned, conservation ultimately is a business decision for the producer. And they decided whether or not they were willing to make that change based upon that payment. And that actually allowed us to get the fields where we had either the most impact because the payment was the highest, or fields where, while we didn't get as much impact, we didn't pay very much for them. And in my testimony, written testimony near the end, I talked about what I think the next opportunities for conservation are. And if there's any weakness to the way we practice conservation right now, it's the fact that we pay for practices in hopes of an outcome instead of paying for outcomes regardless of the practice. And in order to pay for outcomes, as Chief Weller so eloquently talked about, we have to develop the scientific knowledge to quantify those outcomes. Dr. Beneshek, we refer to them as dose-response curves. You know, you take, if you take 2 aspirin to make your headache go away, don't 20 aspirin make it go away faster. Well, maybe not. Maybe there actually is an appropriate level of conservation to apply to a site. And then also really thinking about how we specifically deploy tools. The last thing I'd say is, in order to really magnify our conservation impact, we've got another tool that I'm not showing you today because it's a little more complicated, but we've put it into the hands of about 120 certified crop advisors in the Saginaw Valley of Michigan, and they're now talking about conservation as part of the farmer's entire management program. That's an RCPP project where we then make a referral to NRCS for the technical and financial assistance for those growers who are interested in those conservation practices. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions when we get to that portion.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, thank you very much. Now, recognize Mr. Rodilious for five minutes questioning, or testimony. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and Ranking Members, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here representing the Agricultural Drainage Management Coalition. I've spent the last 30 years in the drainage industry traveling the Midwest. Today, I'd like to give you a brief overview of water table management and tell you about some exciting innovations. So, what is table, water table management, or subsurface tile drainage? There's a flash drive in your testimony I sent that has a video of how this really works. There are three important components to a system. Commonly, plastic pipes called tile are installed beneath the surface of agricultural fields to collect water. These, these tile lines are usually buried 3 to 4 feet deep and spaced about 40 to 80 feet apart. These lines are laterals, then run into the main that conveys the water to the outlet. The outlet is where the main empties the water out of the field, usually into a ditch. So, why install tile? Why is this practice so widely used? Here are a few of the benefits. Number one reason is increased yield. Farmers get a 15% to 25% increase in production. Tile reduces soil erosion and keeps the topsoil on the land. It stores water in the soil profile and can reduce flooding. Farmers can plant earlier in the spring and harvest on time in the fall. And by managing their water, farmers are able to better utilize the potential of their seed and other inputs. It is far more economical to increase production through tile than to farm more acres. The NRCS has long held that subsurface drainage is a best management practice. In the 1940s through the 1970s, the USDA had a vigorous cost-share program to encourage farmers to install subsurface drainage. It's estimated that during that time period, more than 50 million acres were artificially drained. These systems are still very effective in managing the water table and increasing crop production. The 1985 Federal Farm Bill introduced conservation compliance. A new swamp buster provision was adopted. Any producer in the farm program could no longer drain a wetland. Landowners have continued to install tile, but now for the purpose of managing water and crop production. Any current drainage work requires permits and is highly regulated by several agencies. Tile drainage is often viewed as the culprit for nitrogen and phosphorus in our water. You need to look no further than the Des Moines Water Works lawsuit. But most of these nutrients would move into our water bodies even if there was no tile. Currently, there are about 300 million acres of cropland in the U.S. About 100 million of those acres have some type of artificial drainage. But are there new and better ideas we should consider for drainage systems? The ADMC was started in 2003 to find solutions and practices that improve and maintain agronomic production while producing environmental benefits. Today, we have developed new technology and innovations that allow us to install smart drainage. With these new systems, we can harvest and treat water before it exits the system. A variety of drainage water management practices can dramatically improve the environmental outcomes. These practices help to reduce the risk of farmers losing their crop, improve wildlife habitat, reduce the risk of flooding, and minimize the loss of nutrients. The following practices are smart drainage solutions. All of these innovations allow us to capture and treat water and remove significant amounts of nutrients. They are controlled drainage, saturated buffers, woodchip bioreactors, and subirrigation systems. We can also retrofit these practices on many acres of existing tile systems. The NRCS and the ADMC have a great working relationship. In 2011, a memorandum of understanding was signed between the ADMC and the NRCS. This memorandum calls for the ADMC to train and certify technical service providers to help with the implementation of smart drainage technology for water management practices. Many of these practices are eligible for NRCS cost-share money. In conclusion, the challenge we face is to feed 9 billion people while maintaining water quality and economic viability on the farm. We need to implement these innovative conservation practices using smart systems of drainage water management. These practices are proven and cost-effective in enhancing water quality on working lands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for testimony. Thanks to all the, all members of the panel for your testimony. I'll take the liberties of the first five minutes of questioning. Ms. Dawson, we were talking about return on investment. I have to say, one of the, I have a lot of respect for my predecessors who had the the vision to establish the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. The great collaborative, the collaborative efforts have come as a result of that, so thank you for your service. Plus, you have the the most fun acronym in Washington, NIFWIF. What can I say? You know, you know, my question for you, as much of the United States has recently had the worst drought in history. Fortunately, Pennsylvania has not seen as much damage to our agriculture production as folks certainly in the West have. What are some of the issues that you have seen in Pennsylvania over the past few years that have impacted conservation and agriculture overall?
It's true. Pennsylvania is quite blessed with, I think, something on the order of 40 inches of rain per year, so that's, it's pretty remarkable and a great resource for agriculture in the state. But farmers there are certainly not immune to challenges. Perhaps what we see most significantly is land use changes that can have a huge dynamic on hydrology and the way agriculture is done in the state. And we want to keep our working lands working, so we're very dedicated to finding ways to to get solutions that help keep farmers on the land. We're also seeing issues with invasive species and new pests in our forestry work. This is a huge challenge that we're working in partnership to try to find solutions to, but continues to be a rather, quite a behemoth in in conservation. And as we've talked a lot about today, managing soil health is going to have a lot of impact on our ability to manage that water, manage flooding, and to also keep nutrients on the land where they can do the most good. So, we're working to implement solutions with our, with our agriculture partners to to be big proponents of managing for soil health, so we can benefit both the farmer and the ecosystem at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Price, you know, some folks have the mindset that if you take cattle off the land, it'll be better for wildlife, and everything will go back the way it was before we ever showed up. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm extremely concerned, particularly through the Antiquities Act. Of course, much land is being taken out of production, taking livestock off the land. Nature designed a system over hundreds of thousands, millions of years, using animal impact and fire to rejuvenate those lands. You know, before man came along, we had, had fire, we had droughts, we had wet spells, we had extremely cold, we had extreme heat, and we had huge herds of buffalo and other wildlife. Can you imagine 10,000, some historians say 50,000 to 60,000 buffalo in one herd coming across the landscape here in Washington, D.C. before the buildings were here? It was, in modern-day terms, it was devastated. There was nothing left. But nature designed her plants, mainly the grass species, to put on fresh tillers when that fire impacted them, when the animals bit them off, laid on them, stomped on them, whatever, and then it rejuvenated itself. You take land that's totally out of use by wildlife or livestock, and it get, the grasses get old, they get marbled, and they die. In New Mexico, at Las Cruces, there's, at the research center there in the 1930s, they fenced off an area with no, putting no livestock on it. At the time, it was a really good black grommer grass cover. Look at this clock, I'm sorry. And that today, that grommer grass country is just as much a desert as any of the rest of it, due to lack of animal impact. The animal impact is so important for the future of our Western United States and those brittle environments for certain. And and so, we, we must utilize our livestock, properly manage, to rejuvenate these lands. It's the only resource we have, because I don't think we can go back to pre-man conditions. I don't think anybody wants to move back to Europe, or Asia, or Africa, or wherever they came from. And that's the only way we can reenact those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I'm going to go ahead and yield back, looking forward to, we'll get another round. But let me just say that I know from the previous Subcommittee hearing that we had on healthy soils and other healthy soils opportunities, forums, I've been able to sit as a part of, you know, the, clearly, there are some practices that that show and document how that livestock helps to stimulate soil growth, soil production, and, and healthy soil. So, thank you. Recognize the gentle lady from New Mexico for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the panel. We really appreciate your level of expertise and participation in these hearings so that we can better navigate as a committee how we support you and support USDA to make a difference. And Mr. Price, in your testimony, you mentioned how helpful NRCS is and that the personnel there are incredible resource for ranchment. And some of the New Mexico ranchers and, and the tribal communities have expressed to me that navigating NRCS programs can be very difficult, especially for small producers, because they don't really have the staff or resources to apply for multiple programs or loans or grants. I've also heard that some producers may get a grant, since they might be smaller and still manage to get a grant, but because there, there's no technical assistance still manage to get a grant, but because there's no technical assistance components to those grants, it can be very difficult for them to successfully implement their projects without further assistance from USDA. And as a user of those programs, can you talk to me about some ways that we can make conservation programs more user-friendly so that all producers, irrespective of their size, can benefit from the investments that we've worked to make available?
Some of this issue goes back to 1985. The highly erodible lands, the NRCS personnel were sent to do, tend to that and look at it in detail. It took them away from, or us ranchers, I'm sorry, to study these issues, to talk to us about them. We didn't have that expertise for land planning, conservation planning. That's where National Grazing Lands Coalition came into effect. It formed in 1995, which was put in there for grassroots, boots-on-the-ground program to where they could help us understand the issues. I strongly believe that right now NRCS needs to be able to train those personnel in their offices, in the local offices, that can tell us the story, help us understand. Right now, a lot of people think that equip NRCS is based on getting money from the government. That's a huge part of it. We're proud to have that opportunity for that. But we've got to have education from those NRCS personnel. One of them told me a while back, it's a pretty simplistic turn. He said, "Instead of giving you fish, we want to teach you how to fish." And that is huge.
I appreciate that. I agree with you that that sort of education and technical assistance needs to be driven back down to the local level and make that available. In addition to that partnership, what changes or improvements can you recommend to NRCS that better support these innovation, the innovation that we've talked about today for these conservation practices? You know, right on the spot, that'll teach you to be part of the panel. You want to solve all of these problems.
I'm not known to be real quick on my feet.
We're delighted to have you here. Your experience makes a difference. If there are things that come right to you, that's very helpful to us. If there are things that you want to bring back to us. But it really is the work that you do that makes a difference in all of our abilities to help every producer engage in a productive way.
And that's, you know, one of the things, the NRCS people I've worked with in the past, they've always struggled with why don't all of these ranchers just jump on board and take part in it? Every one of us ranchers has a different lifestyle. We've got different goals. I have a, I love what I do, and I get excited talking about what I do. But a lot of ranchers, that is not their focus. That's not what they do. How you convince other folks to participate, and particularly in utilizing these more intensive grazing programs, it's very important on how we move forward with our grassland. So many times, we utilize that money for brushwork, let's say, and we don't emphasize grazing management. That needs to be a huge part, and we need to look at that harder as to how we convince people. We can't force it on them, but if the federal government is allowing us to utilize their dollars, perhaps they should say, "Okay, Frank, we really need you to focus more on grazing management so that work that you've done can be more productive for the future."
Well, I appreciate that partnership developing aspects, and thank you for your response. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Now recognize the gentleman from Michigan, Dr. Beneschak, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bowman, hey, good to see you. I was happy to see you the other day at the Great Lakes meeting. We were both there for a while there. And I was happy to hear about your work, this conservation plan, and then your example with the water table, the work that you're doing. And also, in your written testimony, you talked about this Michigan agribusiness, developing a partnership with them. Can you tell me more about how that works?
Sure. We have identified a suite of 10 NRCS practices that have the, field-based practices that have the most positive impact on water quality. And we've put those into a tool similar to this one that allows the certified crop advisors, when they're meeting with their customers, to use that tool to talk about different production scenarios and how they can integrate conservation into those production scenarios. But one of the important things, and I think my fellow witness, Mr. Price, would appreciate this, is that we don't lead with the cost share. The conservation has to make business sense for the producer's operation, and then we share with them. And, you know, there may be financial assistance available if you're interested, but you ought to farm this way anyway. And there are some producers that don't want to participate with the government because they have their reasons. And we actually have some private pools of money that we've put together where we can cost-share on practices using that private money that then don't have some of the application requirements that you, that the producer has to go through with the public money.
Well, you know, you also mentioned in your written testimony about how some of the government agency people had some reluctance to work with the producers a little bit too.
Well, I have to be careful. I don't know if the chief is still here. But the fact is, the fact is, is that when we first proposed this project and said, "We're going to have certified crop advisors talking about conservation with their producers," we ruffled some feathers among some of the agency folks out in the field, because they sort of said, "Well, that's what we do." And the fact is, they are the technical experts on conservation when it comes to applying those conservation practices. But in order for us to be most effective, maybe we don't need them out there recruiting the growers. Maybe we need them helping the growers with the actual execution of the practices, and we can use other folks to recruit the growers. And so, yeah, we're going through some growing pains with this project, but I think we're going to come out on the other side all right.
No, that's good to hear. You might have heard my comments with the chief there. I think these, you know, private nonprofit partnerships, along with the business, it just works better because there's better communication between all the parties rather than having the government make an edict about what, you got to do this. And then they don't really know what they're talking about because they're not right there on this farm or on the land. And I think this approach leads to a much better result. Let me just end by asking a question. What can we, how can we make this better? I mean, did the farm bill, were there policies there that helped you out or made you do your job better?
So there's one item, and we're in discussion with NRCS on this right now. And this is a little bit of a cultural change for the agency. When they work with a grower, they, the first thing they go do is go out and develop a conservation plan for that farm. And that can sometimes be involved for both the agency and the grower to get through all of that. One of the things we're asking for is actually sort of an exemption from that conservation planning requirement, because in our RCPP proposal, we had already say what the resource concern was we were addressing. We had already say how we were going to address it, and we had to put in place a protocol to screen that only the fields that were actually addressing it would be eligible for the cost share. And so if we have a grower that's never done anything with the government before, and, you know, we're saying to him, "Why don't you try doing this filter strip or this drainage control structure on this one spot?" And then we turn around and they say, "Well, you have to have the staff person come out and do this conservation plan and do all that kind of stuff." Maybe we can make a little bit easier entry for them into these programs by looking at some different ways to get them in.
All right. Thank you. I'm on a time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the gentleman. Mr. Peterson, recognize.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodellius, how much of the tile that's being put in now has got structures associated with it?
There's actually very little tile being put in right now that is controlled drainage, that they're actually holding water back in the soil profile. I think we estimate it at about 20,000 acres. It's really quite, quite a process to get it approved and to get it into practice.
So it's, the structure, getting the structures approved, is it quite a process?
There's getting, the problem is there aren't enough technical service providers. There aren't enough people to assist farmers in the process.
And so, most of the time, not happening?
Most of the time, it's not happening. I would agree with that.
And the biggest problem is it's just too much work, too complicated?
I think it's a lack of understanding of the process. I think going out and telling the story, what needs to be done, and showing the benefits is something that we really have to get more involved in.
Is the cost share adequate that's being offered for these, if they do get through the process?
I think it's an encouragement to the farmers, and farmers are not, producers are really not very quick to buy into cost share on a lot of those things. I think the biggest thing that we could do is get people to do a CAP-130, a Conservation Activity Plan, so they could look at their farm and see what practices might be available, what might work on their farm, gives them an overview of what could be done. And there's pretty good cost-share money for that.
So up in the valley, you know, where I've talked about potentially tiling a lot of that, it would probably need structures with it. Would the farmers tile their land and conclude a structure if we took care of it through the conservation partnership or something?
I think that area is really well situated for that practice. The flatter it is, the better controlled drainage works.
And they probably have a better understanding of what the reason for doing this as well.
Absolutely. They've been surface draining for so long, they understand how water moves.
But you could use these structures to significantly improve water quality and solve some of these other issues that people have if it was more widespread. Is that not correct?
Absolutely. We can dramatically reduce nitrogen and phosphorus in the outflow.
So the, you know, people, you probably aren't aware of this, but we're having this big controversy or discussion in Minnesota over these buffer strips, because the governor came out and was going to require 16 and 1/2-foot buffer on every ditch in Minnesota. It's caused quite a commotion. At one time, it was 50 feet. You can about imagine, 50 feet on every ditch. So with these saturated buffers, which I guess went through some pilot program, and now is, I guess, an accepted practice, is that correct?
There's an interim standard for saturated buffers. There's no cost share yet, but the practice is being quickly adopted.
So are the folks that are working on the buffer strips in Minnesota aware of this? And is this something that's being considered in whatever they're doing out there?
The Agricultural Drainage Management Coalition has had several workshops and onsite events to show that this practice does work, how minimally invasive it is to a farm practice, you know, to put a control structure on a buffer strip, and then to put some tile lines out, the minimum 300 feet, up to about 1,000 feet. We can denitrify and take phosphorus out of a lot of water.
Well, I think we've got, you know, that's my understanding too. And I think we've got some work to do, because the people that I've talked to that are involved in this, some of them that's supposed to be knowledgeable, have no idea about this whatsoever. They just think this is some kind of a wacko thing that I'm talking about, you know? So we've got a lot of work to do to get people to understand.
If we have, you know, we have that buffer initiative in Minnesota, and it would be criminal not to put this practice on those buffers. It's really important that we consider that, that initiative, that we can put buffers and saturate the buffer. It's a great wildlife win. There's a lot of wins on that end.
Yeah. And, you know, lastly, why, I went to the Ducks Unlimited banquet, and the Ducks Unlimited guy got up and made this speech about how we got to stop this tiling because they're destroying all the wetlands and the wildlife in the country. You know, I mean, what are these people, are they still living in the 1940s or what's going on? How could anybody be making a speech like that? And now, I mean, he's like one of the leaders in Ducks Unlimited. Is that propaganda that they teach these people or what?
Well, it seems like everybody likes bad news. And people, anytime you, not anytime, but most of the times when you see those type of publications, they show a big white capped slough, and they say, "We have to stop wetland drainage." I mean, you haven't been able to drain a wetland.
No, I know.
For multiple years, but it sells memberships and, you know, if I had a week to live, I'd want to spend a few days of a duck hunting.
Well, we've got a lot of education to do, and we appreciate you coming out and spending some time with the committee today.
Thank you.
Yield back.
Thanks, gentlemen. Now recognize the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Allen, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to our panel for appearing here today and kind of give us some insight on what we're trying to do as far as conservation is concerned. And Mr. Price, specifically relative to your operation, you know, there are people in this town that think that the cattle industry is bad for the environment and bad for the land, and dealing, that wildlife would be far better off without the cattle industry. You have any thoughts about that? And what are we doing in the cattlemen's association to change the perception out there?
Yes, I have tried to discuss. Animal impact on the land is extremely important. We can't go back to those pre-man times and have the huge herds of wildlife crossing the country. And as we take land out of production with no livestock and turn it into strictly wildlife areas, I can show you places in my home county that haven't had livestock on them for 50 and 60 years. They're turning it into a desert. The lands right next to them that are being ransched properly and with proper grazing management are flourishing for our country. Granted, it's a drier environment than a lot of places, but, so we have to keep that animal impact on the land, and no way we can do that is us livestock men, cattle men, through proper grazing management. We, in my opinion, the environmental enthusiasts, I call them, that think that we ought to just take all the livestock off the land, they're polluting it, we are their best resource. All we've got to do is tell them our story and get them to where they understand it. As we increase the strength of those grass systems, the root systems get deeper, the density covers, we stop the soil erosion from wind and water. It takes that bad old CO2 out of the air, and through photosynthesis, what does it do? It turns that carbon dioxide into oxygen, puts it back out in the air, and puts the carbon in the soil where we can raise more grass. It's a win-win situation, and we've just got to get practiced enough at it to move ourselves forward.
Industry-wide, is the, I mean, are all of our cattlemen doing it the right way? Or is there still a lot of work to be done there?
We've made some huge mistakes in the past. My great-grandfather, in 1876, started his ranching enterprise. From the records that we have, he grazed from five to six times more animals per acre than we can even think about doing now. He wasn't doing it to abuse the land. It was a pristine, really, the stirrup high grass story you hear, and boy, this grass is just going to produce forever, and we can't hurt it. He didn't realize he was making a mistake. Early on, he recognized that he wanted this land to continue on in the family. A little off the subject, he sold half of his land when his children became of age to his children, and the way they paid for it was through sales of the wool. It was a good deal for everybody, but he wanted it to move on into the future. So we made mistakes. We've got to admit we made those mistakes. I make mistakes on a daily basis. Let's learn from it.
Yeah, thinking about endangered species, are y'all having the problem with the wildhogs in Texas like we're having in Georgia?
They are potentially the worst environmental problem we have. Something, we got to figure something.
Got to do something. Just a week ago, we had the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency sitting right there in your seat, and we were talking about the WOTUS rule, Waters of the U.S. And from what you understand of that, if you had to get a permit due to the WOTUS rule... And from what you understand of that, if you had to get a permit due to the Waters Rule, do you have any idea what kind of effect that would have on your operation, what kind of impact?
I'm afraid it would decimate the livestock industry in our area. You know, I've got land myself that's up on the top country, got some what we call Playa Lakes. Once every 10 to 15 years, they'll have water in them because it came huge rainfall. This year, by golly's, we've got water in them, still have some water in them, rain nine and 1/2 inches in one day. But it scares me to think that through the rules of Waters of the U.S., that they can come in and make us get permits for doing basically anything, if they let those rules perpetuate. It's a scary situation for us ranchmen. We need to stop that.
Well, right now, the courts are in our favor, and we have an injunction against it, but thank you for your time, and all of you, to your testimony, and I yield back.
Let me yield back. Take the liberty of just another round for anybody who would like. Start that out with, Mr. Roman, tell me about the pay-for-performance model TNC is using in the Saginaw Bay area. It sounds pretty interesting. Can you expand on this?
Sure. So, we have a calculator very similar to the one that I just showed you, that actually estimates the amount of sediment and nutrient that enters the nearest surface water body, and that's actually important, because some hills run down towards a river or a stream or a ditch, other hills run down to a low spot in the field, and we're only interested in the places where it actually runs into water. And in using that tool, we can calculate from applying field-based practices what the estimated reduction in tonnage is. We actually use the NRCS's Universal Soil Loss Equation, Russell, to do that calculation, and then with money that we have from a couple private donors, actually, the Method Corporation that makes salt products and Green Mountain Coffee have both given us grants for this work. We put a price on that sediment, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you what that price per ton is right now, but we say to the producer, if you're willing to make those changes, here's how much we'll pay for you to make those changes. It's a pretty simple program.
Simple, but effective. Sometimes less is more.
Sometimes less is more.
Yeah, well, thank you. Mr. Rudilius, thank you for your testimony, and, you know, I think in your written testimony and your oral, you laid out a really strong case of why, you know, what we're doing today in terms of agricultural drainage is different from the days of, in the past, and the benefits of that, you've laid out nicely in terms of preventing erosion and retaining water within the soil profile, and, you know, just, you know, the, what is it, the 10 to 15% increased yield in terms of crops. You referenced the implementation of Swamp Buster and its impact on drainage management, and because of this policy, drainage is often used as a bad word. Can you talk more about the conservation benefits of proper drainage management? Also, you discussed the consequence. What are the consequences of the land when excess water is not properly managed?
In the Midwest, we have the luxury of excess water. A lot of our soils are saturated much of the time when we want to go in and plant. We, what the tile system does is really kind of heal the land. We're able to, if we have high water tables, we have a lot of salinity that we have to, that we can move out of the water, out of the soil by tiling, by putting control structures in, we can hold water back in the soil profile and denitrify. One of the most important things about holding back some water and being able to utilize some water is that when that crop needs water badly, we don't need that soil drained that far. So, if we can hold some water and make it available, when the corn is silking, or when the pods are filling on the beans, it's an incredible bump in production, and it doesn't take any more inputs, it doesn't take any more chemicals, it doesn't take anything more to do that. So, the upside of drainage, you know, I've been doing this for over 30 years, and I've yet to meet anyone who is sorry they tiled. It's such a wonderful and cost-effective method of managing.
Doesn't take any more acreage to get that increased yield for farmers as well.
Correct. And it's like an annuity, it's year after year after year.
Thank you. I yield back, recognize the ranking member, any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dawson, you discussed how the role of your organization is not to advocate or litigate, but to create a collaborative, if you will, to bring all the parties to the table. And I'm definitely interested in hearing more about some of the successful agricultural partnerships that you mentioned in your written testimony, such as the Monarch Butterfly Conservation Fund and the Gulf Coast Migratory Bird Habitat Initiative. Unfortunately, in my opinion, too many still believe that efforts to protect endangered and threatened species or species habitats always ends up hurting farmers and ranchers and prevents them from working their lands, but it's clear to me that farmers and ranchers, you know, are not the enemy, and we should be enlisting them as productive partners and allies in helping us protect endangered species and their habitats. How can we eliminate this misconception that we're always at opposite ends of the spectrum, and that we can, in fact, work together on these issues?
That's a great question. We, and, you know, again, we don't advocate, and that does make it difficult for us to play an active role in dispelling that myth, but we believe that by perpetuating our partnerships, by growing them, by increasing the role of partners and their voices at the table to do good work, we're able to get practices implemented on the ground that advance habitat restoration and that make for more resilient landscapes, and we're really able to let the work speak for itself. And by doing that, and by increasing our ability to demonstrate what we're able to do by working in partnership with farmers and ranchers in the ag community, by increasing habitat on those lands or making it more friendly to those species, we're able to promote that concept in that way. With respect to those other geographies where we're having, we're doing a lot of other great work, unfortunately, I'm very narrow in my scope for my specific geography, but we'd be happy to give you more information on those projects as well.
That would be great. I mean, we all, and I know that it's just the two of us right now, but we speak, which I appreciate that the chairman did, for a much larger representation of this committee and members of Congress, we all have pressure about making sure we're doing the right thing for those species, and we're supporting and advocating for our producers and our ranchers and farmers. What else can Congress do that minimizes what could be, and often, too often is, natural tension, but creates a more harmonious environment where people really are motivated to work together and do many of the kind of problem-solving aspects that each of you have talked about in your testimony today? What can we do?
I think you've seen some great examples here today of folks coming to the table to work together to find innovative and special solutions to some of our problems. I think that consistent support for those programs that have enabled that is going to be of paramount importance going forward. You know, continuing support for equip and other farm bill conservation programs makes it possible for a lot of us to deliver and engage in the practices that we want to see on landscapes. And enabling NRCS and other organizations to do demonstration projects, so folks can see it enacted in real life, you know, I think that that makes such a big difference when people can see the kinds of things that maybe Mr. Price is doing on his land, we can see those in action, and people can see that it works, and we're able to get more interest in things that way. And then continuing to work with community-based organizations, the folks on the ground who are doing the work, they're the ones who are the experts in what's really needed. So, instead of any kind of top-down approach, it's really great to be able to engage the people who are doing the work, who are engaging locally, who can drive the planning and the strategies from that side of things, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield back. That's like a minute and almost 10 seconds credit I have.
Well, if the gentle lady will yield, I'd like to open it up to the other three members of the panel to answer that question as well. What can we do, being forward-looking? I think we did a pretty good farm bill, but before we know it, there'll be time to start on the next one. Any ideas on, any critique on things that we could do differently, or new ideas that we haven't addressed, or what should we do and what shouldn't we do?
I don't know what you should do, but, you know, the Great Plains, and that covers a whole lot of country, developed and functions as a grazing and fire-dependent vegetative ecology. Lack of either disturbance, and that includes the fire and the grazing, changes the vegetative dynamics and subsequently limits the habitat for livestock and wildlife. In other words, as I've said before, we are changing our environment from lack of animal impact, and you look at some of these endangered species, the sage grouse, the monarch butterfly, the changes of these range lands turning into a brush-type desert habitat is, that's what's causing this, and that's, we need to portray to the public and through NRCS is a tremendously good way to do it, or the USDA, what's happened and what we need to do to resolve it, and push it as hard as we can. We are literally looking at the desertification of the Great Plains, and we're pretty darn close to being there already.
Mr. Bowman?
I've got one for you that will be really hard, and it's hard because you're in the public spotlight. So, our trustees on a regular basis will ask us what we tried that didn't work, and, you know, my brother still farms, he tried growing 20 acres of teff last year, it was a complete disaster, worst thing he ever did, but he tried it. And producers try things, the private sector tries things, the not-for-profit sector tries things, and it would be a really interesting set of testimony, albeit a risky set of testimony, to ask the agencies to come in and say, so what'd you try in the last year that didn't work, and what'd you learn from it? That's the only way we change these programs, is by trying things and recognizing that some of them aren't going to work. I'm still not sure our CPP proposal's going to work. We're going to get some good stuff done, but whether or not we get to the outcomes we want to get to, I don't know. It's an experiment, it's a new way to deliver conservation, and figuring out how to try some of that stuff. I managed a nonprofit that was rehabilitating housing in an urban area with HUD grants, and every month I had to submit a monthly report, and every month that report came back from the person whose job it was to review that because something was wrong on it. And frankly, I spent more time filling out reports than I did rehabbing houses, and was grumbling about it to one of my older mentors, and he said, what you have to understand is that that individual will never get in trouble because you didn't get any houses done, but they'll get in trouble if they get a bad GAO report. And that's the culture you're fighting, that you have to figure out how to change, how to enable that risk-taking.
Understood. Thank you very much. Mr. Rudilius, any input?
I would just like to remind all of us that we live in the midst of a very productive bunch of soil. We have some of the best soil in the world. Only 11% of the soil in the world is arable, and of that, very little of it's highly productive, and we have to manage the tension of farming that land to its maximum and healing that land at the same time. So, I would really encourage the NRCS to keep helping people help the land, and let's find ways to work together toward that end.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield to the gentle lady for any closing remarks.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any specific closing remarks. I appreciate the panel, and I really appreciate the closing sentiment and your allowance of extra time to talk about the power of learning from our mistakes, not being so risk adverse, and taking every opportunity to collaborate and work together. So, thank you very much for the hearing today, and thank you very much to the panel for staying so late. We appreciate you very much.
Just like all the comments of the ranking member, thank you for coming here and sharing your expertise. Chief, thanks for sticking around. That's why USDA is my favorite agency. You guys are in it for the long haul, you and Chief Tedwell consistently, you're engaged, and when we're doing something, you're here for the second panel, and we recognize that, and we really, really appreciate it. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. The Subcommittee on Conservation and Forestry Earing is now adjourned.